I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, item fifteen, on the new business, item A, bond to buildings, appendix F. Dr. Markley.
I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson to come forward to review her presentation. Two things to note about this presentation, there are going to be two action items. One of them you'll approve at the end of the presentation, which is the sequence for building projects. The second one, E.C.'s going to give you some background as it relates to item C, resolution and professional design services. So, this presentation's going to cover both aspects of those, but at the end of the presentation, you'll just approve the proposed sequence or the order of instruction for the projects that were listed in the bond. And the resolution, professional design services, is a little more complicated, and so Mr. Bullitt will be here as well to answer any questions related to that. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations. You've passed a school, a much-needed school bond referendum, and I hope you feel the weight off your shoulders, because I don't. Now, now the hard work really begins, right? And, and that's, that's really the question, is what's next? And that's what our presentation is about, what's, what's next? And we call it bond to buildings. We like to keep it really simple, and whether we're talking about a individual construction project, or whether we're talking about the bond program, you know, I talk about scope, schedule, and budget. It's quality projects, on time and under budget. Scope, schedule, and budget, they're all interdependent on one another. You know, if you affect one, it will affect the others. If you increase quality, you can expect your budget to increase. So, you know, that's, that's how we manage our projects, that's how we manage the, the bond program. And, but just as important, I think, to start the bond program, we all need to be on the same page. We all need to have the same understanding and expectations of what is the scope, schedule, and budget for the, for the bond program. I know some of this you've seen before, so I'm going to go through pretty quickly. If you do have a question, just interrupt me, and I'll be glad to, glad to try to answer that. I've broken the projects up into some categories, just for simplicity of the presentation. The first one is new construction. Northeast Elementary School, that is the property that we're in the process of purchasing now on Edgewater Club Road. Previously, the Board of Education has selected the Castle Hain prototype as the design, and L.S. three P associate as the designer. We do have some funds that the county had given us to get started on that, and we've started the design, and most recently you approved schematic designs for that school. Blair Elementary School, the Board of Education also selected a prototype for design of this school, it's Snipes Academy, and one of the main reasons was the auditorium that you see there. We felt like having Blair Elementary School having that auditorium would not only benefit Blair, but would also benefit Noble Middle School, who doesn't have an auditorium. And College Park Elementary School, we have not selected a prototype for this site because of some unique challenges, specifically with the size, the shape, the topography, the traffic. It's a very residential neighborhood, and it's a uniquely shaped site. And, you know, so we're looking at a prototype versus a new design. We haven't come up with a recommendation yet for you, but we will, and, but overall, or ultimately, we want the best solution overall for, for College Park.
How large is that site?
Um, I don't know the exact acreage off, offhand. It's, um, it's a, it's, I would say it's probably around sixteen, seventeen acres, but it's got a, it's, it's long and linear, it's got a lot of road frontage.
And I'd remind folks that that one slopes down, so that even though it looks like a large site, a part of it would be potential flood area, so you can only build really where the current school is now.
Wasn't that one of the suggestions, that, that area that does flood quite a bit, wasn't there a suggestion made as to why we couldn't build a school there without it? You know, build the new one, that way you wouldn't have to move the children at all?
That, that was a suggestion from Mr. Carter, and we had met with him, and I think he understands why we, we can't-
I just wanted to-
-build that, you know, build a new school on the site while College Park is still attending school there. Additions and renovations. Laney High School, we're going to build a new main gym. In addition, we're going to build a media center, and then we're going to renovate the vacated media center into classroom space. So, very specific program at Laney. Also, at Hogard, we're going to build a new main gym. We want to expand the cafeteria and kitchen and renovate the existing building.
I've got a question about the, the Laney and Hogard projects. I mean, I-
Jumping all over.
Completely support them. What concerns me is you've got Laney High School that has, what, twenty-one, twenty-two-hundred students now?
It's over two thousand.
Over two thousand. You've got Hogard with sixteen, seventeen-hundred students, and the proposal is to build a sixteen-hundred student gym. Is that not too small for those size schools?
Well, the, the size of the gym is based on our current ed specs. We are overpopulated, but our, our long-range plan is to bring that population down to, to match our ed specs.
How are you going to do that?
So, well, at, at some point, there, we may have to build another high school, but there's also changes in the way high schools are, are, are operating. We're also talked about a vocational school, we've talked about growth in our, our-
But I'm concerned about right this, this moment.
And-
I mean, I think Ashley's gym seats, what, twenty-five-hundred?
Sixteen.
Ashley's gym is only sixteen?
The bleacher seating is sixteen-hundred, the entire gym, including the floor space, is a little over two thousand. The, the gymnasium and support spaces proposed for Hogard and Ashley are exactly the square footage of, I mean, Hogard and Laney are exactly the square footage as Ashley's gym.
Well, you know, I guess then maybe Hogard, okay, but I'm thinking Laney, because there's some discussion about what to do, as you say, in the future, the possibility of, of making Trask into a ninth-grade center, which means there's a, there's a real potential that Laney could have twenty-five, twenty-six-hundred students, and yet you would have a gym not big enough to even get the student body. Although I do realize Trask has its own, its, its own gym, but if you wanted to have some kind of event, it's not, I, I'm just thinking that, that you ought to maybe reconsider whether or not maybe two thousand seats might be a better number for those two.
I think that's a good, I think it's a good point with the long-range plan of Trask, and it's something we can look at as we, as we get started as, into that design.
I thought that once we moved, though, when we, before, when we put this plan together, we had not purchased the, the Rock Church property. That wasn't even on the radar. So, the discussions about moving Trask to the Rock Church after all of the bonds have been exhausted and those new schools have been built, and then, and then moving, the making Trask a ninth-grade center was to alleviate some of the overcrowding, not necessarily to add, or to add space at the, at the, at the campus itself, at the Laney campus. I, I mean, I, twenty-five-hundred students is untenable at Laney.
Laney area seems to be growing. All I'm simply saying is, right now, they've got twenty-three-hundred students. They need a, I agree, they need a bigger gym, but I'm just suggesting that if the population of Laney would become twenty-five-hundred, that having a sixteen-hundred student gym is almost a replication of what happened when they only put a six-hundred student gym in there to start with. I, I'm just thinking that we ought to evaluate whether or not that's a big enough facility for the size that school could become, because the ninth grader's going to want to be part of Laney when it comes to athletics.
The, the intent of opening Laney as a, as a ninth-grade center is, becomes basically a ninth-grade school with its own principal. I mean, I think, Don, you served in, at Williston as a ninth-grade center, and so it's sort of a replication of that, now-
So, it's, it's not what we did at New Hanover, where Snipes was a ninth-grade center, but was actually an extension of Snipes?
I think it's, it's a separate building, it's going to need its own, its own principal. And so, that ninth grade, becomes a ninth grade, from my perspective, it's always been a ninth-grade school. Now, ninth graders can play high school football, they're located on the same campus, so they have access to those, those kinds of things. But that school, you, it's, I can't be the principal at Laney and then also have a building next door, it needs to have its own principal, much like, I think, the former ninth-grade centers had.
See, that's the first I've heard of that, that that was the, the concept that was in mind.
Wow, I'd always base it on the concept you guys had had when you had ninth-grade school.
Well, but when we had a ninth-grade center at Snipes, which was before you came here, which was when we were renovating New Hanover, and everybody really thought that was a great idea, but the principal at New Hanover was the principal of Snipes, they had an assistant principal that was on station down there, but those were not Snipes students, those were New Hanover students who were housed at Snipes. And that's kind of what I thought we were talking about with, with Trask and Laney, but if you're talking about actually having a ninth-grade center that would have its own athletics and its own everything, that's a different concept than what I thought we were doing.
I see it as a ninth-grade school, now integrated athletically for those kinds of activities with the, with the high school. But that's the only connection I would see, would be those athletic programs sharing those students.
Well, then it gets, then, if that's the case, it gets back to exactly what I was saying. A sixteen-hundred student gym for a twenty-four, twenty-five-hundred student high school seems small.
Do we have the capability of building a bigger gym on the Laney campus? I don't think we do at the Hogard area, but in, in Laney, do we have the space?
Uh, I think so.
But I also remind folks, we limited, we were limited to a hundred and eighty million dollars for this total project. We all know four, three hundred million plus was the actual needs, so-
I just don't want to see us build something that's too small and leads us to the same situation we've had.
The, the high schools are one of the first projects that, that we're going to select a design team for and get started. So, perhaps, you know, maybe the first thing we do in our design process is take a look at, at that. And Ms. E. Step will answer some of your questions and see, you know, is there space? And then maybe present some options and, and some cost. I think the biggest, you know, the biggest hurdle is going to be, you know, can, can we afford to do that?
Because we had X amount of money per project.
Right.
We stated in that bond what we were going to spend.
And I would, and I would caution you to spend your contingency on the first project out the gate, because I, I do believe that, you know, we are going to see some construction cost escalation in this bond program that we have not seen in future or in past bond programs. But I, I'll be glad to, to, you know, look at some options and bring those back to you.
And long-term, we've talked about conversion of the Castle, I mean, the, the Rock Church to a middle school, and we've done some preliminary looking at that site for that, and it will be a, a good site for that. And then second is the discussion about a vocational school, both of which will help alleviate some of the crowding as it relates to the north end and then about, and our high school program in general.
Ms. Anderson, where on the Hogard property do you propose putting the, the new gym?
I don't.
You don't? Okay.
I get that question a, a lot, and, and really, I mean, it, it's only natural, everybody has some ideas, but I, I'll leave that up to the design team. You know, they're the professionals, and that's why we hire them. They will, they will come up with several options and conceptual plans, and, and we'll, we'll make our selection from that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, New Hanover High School, we'll complete renovations at the George West Building, which is, which is shown here, it's across the street from the main building. And Riceville Beach Elementary School and additions, I think you've seen these, some conceptual plans showing how the addition actually may fly over the existing building. And then our middle school renovations, and I, I tell everybody the best way to describe that is we're going to fix what they have. You know, we're not tearing down and replacing anything or, or building new additions. You know, our goal here with these renovations is to modernize these facilities, and, and you'll be able to see that as shown in the picture with the science labs. And then we're going to build, we're going to replace and repair and modernize the infrastructure, which is the top picture, a lot of things that you might not see, but trust me, you'll appreciate it.
In this bond cycle, the new buildings are great, they help capacity. This, to me, is, is as critical as that new construction piece, because it'll extend the life of these middle schools, give us another twenty or thirty years with these buildings.
And our district-wide improvements, these are some of the improvements that we're going to get started on immediately. We want to, to implement these as quickly as possible, they're smaller projects at each and every school, the cameras at all schools, our technology improvements, hardware and infrastructure for our network, and then a building infrastructure, primarily roof replacements and HVAC projects. And, and now to talk briefly about the schedule. Remember, the original schedule is actually eight years, and we said, that's just, that's too long, and we wanted to condense that, so we condensed that to a five-year program, and it created the need for an additional swing site, which fortunately, the Sidbury Road site came into play. The original schedule called for the redistricting and opening, redistricting in August of 2019, and the opening of our new schools and additions, and the middle and high school renovations and additions to be implemented over the first five years, and our district-wide improvements to be implemented over the first three to four years. That schedule looks like this. Again, I've broken it down into groups just, just to help illustrate what the, what the schedule might look, look like, but the original, the, it was a preliminary schedule that we, that we had posted to show what it might look like when we implement these projects. Shows construction of Northeast finishing up in 2017. Blair going to that site for two years while we tore down and replaced Blair, and then Blair would move back to their new facility. College Park would attend Sidbury Road for three years, while during the first two years they were there, we would tear down and replace College Park. When the new College Park was complete, Riceville Beach would attend there for one year while additions and renovations were undertaken at Riceville Beach. All three facilities, well, College Park and, and Riceville Beach would reopen in, in 2019.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible that we can possibly not send College Park to the Rock?
Well, I'm going to-
Could we, could we build Porter's Neck, move Blair to Porter's Neck, move College Park to Blair?
Well, that was actually the very first schedule that was shown, which was eight years, and, and we felt that, that to do that, it was too long of a schedule, and too long of an implementation plan for the bond referendum over an eight-year period, so we, we had condensed that. But we do have an, an alternate schedule that, that we'll, we'll share with you that addresses the concerns for College Park.
Okay, thank you.
Again, the high school additions and renovations, the, these are the, some of the, yes, sir?
But before you leave Blair, in one of the meetings that I attended that Mr. Hance presented, there were questions about building a corridor around, or wall around the outside of Blair, and I don't think you favor that, but I, I would like to understand how you ruled that out.
Well, anytime that we, we propose to demolish a building, there is a process that Department of Public Instruction tells you you have to go through, basically to get their approval. And it doesn't look at, it looks at not only the cost, but it, but it also looks at other things, you know, there may be some historic significance or community attachment, given the location, if, if perhaps you're going to tear down a school and move it instead of replacing it on that site. So, it's a very comprehensive process, but ultimately, in the case of Blair, we, we looked at, we evaluated renovations and additions to that site to bring it up to program, you know, program equal to what we would build new, and we saw the cost of the two options was, were, was virtually the same. And instead of building around an existing building and having that constraint, we, we chose to build the new building.
Yeah, thank you.
The, again, the high school projects are some of the first projects that, that we'll get started on. Middle school renovations, we'll, we'll phase those in, and one change here is, we, we have recently made some pretty significant improvements at Trask and Noble, primarily with the HVAC system, and we have not completed our HVAC improvements at, at Myrtle Grove, so I had moved Myrtle Grove up in the, in the priority. I think it's, I think that's a, that's a bigger need. And then again-
What are we going to do with, what about the students at the middle schools while, I mean, this looks like about a year-long project from the middle of seventeen to the middle of eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
We're, I mean-
Well, we're going to, that, that is going to be, these are going to be some of the most challenging projects we do, and, and it's going to be multi-phased projects to take advantage of the summers. But we, what we know is they're going to be multi-year, multi-phased projects on existing occupied campuses. And, you know, we're, and later on the presentation, we're going to recommend some solutions to, to possibly make that a little easier. But, you know, some of the things that I, that I envisioned, Myrtle Grove is a good example, because those, those, that school is set up in, in almost like pods, there's a sixth-grade pod, a seventh-grade pod, eighth-grade pod. You could put a ten-classroom modular building out and rotate people in and out of there and, and get that work completed during the school year. But we're going to have to implement something like that at these schools, you know, otherwise we'll be out there for, for the next five years, working during the summer.
Well, I think, I think that's my question. All the, all the middle schools are being renovated.
Correct.
They're not being replaced. What, is there any reason that you, may you start staging earlier than the end, but that this work could not be done in phases during the summer?
Well, I think the only, you can certainly do that. It will add to the, the total amount of time to implement the full project. We're obviously going to do the most disruptive work during the summer months and holidays, whenever we can, when kids are not there, but we're also going to try to isolate construction activities during the school year to get as much completed as possible.
So, did your recommended cost include those modular units you were talking about for-
It, it does. We, we did a square foot cost based on a general scope of work that includes, you know, work on an existing campus.
Okay.
And Col- College Park, this, we, we had talked to the school and talked to the principal, and it boiled down to really three questions. Do you have to relocate? Yes. I think everyone understands that and agrees that, that that's in the best interest of the school and the kids, especially in terms of safety and security. And if so, where? I think that the school and the principal now agree that the Sidbury Road site is, is the best site, and, and, you know, it might not be ideal. I don't think anyone likes to leave, but they understand that we do need to leave, they have to go somewhere, and we've shown them some things that I think have, have satisfied their concerns that Sidbury might be the best location. It's actually seven point seven miles away, it's a straight shot up college road. The estimated travel time is fifteen minutes. This is a site plan of, of how we would, we would use the Sidbury Road site for, for the Rock Church, and if I can show you. We will have to, this is the existing building, this is the main sanctuary area, and these, this was, there are eleven classrooms that are in the existing building, so we would have to add some temporary modular buildings there, and we'd bring buses in here and cars in here, and there's plenty of room for staff parking, there's actually probably twice as much parking on this side as, as they currently have at College Park. And a pretty flat, level area here that we can create open play space, which would, would exit out of the, the multipurpose room. Take a look at that floor plan, and this is what it would look like, this is the main entrance. We would have a secured lobby area here with reception and administration, this would be the multipurpose room, the kitchen cafeteria, media center here, and this is your existing classroom area, new classrooms added here, which create a nice, you know, nice pot area or core area for your academic classrooms, and we've put an assistant principal in, in that position. But this is a, we've actually laid out, you know, who would go where when College Park moved over there, and we've gone over that with the, with the principal at College Park, and, and they're very pleased with it. The matter is, moving forward, is getting these plans to College Park, so if people can start seeing what we're doing there, and in the future, maybe holding a PTA meeting out at the Sidbury Road site, you know, so people can, can see firsthand what the facility looks like.
Our goal with any relocation is to keep that under ten miles from an existing site, and then as much as possible, under twenty minutes in terms of travel time. And this fits both those criteria.
So, back to the three questions, I think we've, we've satisfied the first two, and the real question is how long? And, and I understand, you know, not wanting to stay at the, at the Sidbury Road site for three years, of course, you, anyone would want to minimize the time that they're away. So, we looked at several different options, and here's what we've come up with as a, as a possible solution. This basically, instead of, instead of Sidbury Road or, or College Park being at Sidbury for a three-year period, Blair would be at Northeast for a three-year period, allowing Riceville Beach to utilize Blair. Now, the advantage of that is, the swing site, being Northeast Elementary School, is within the Blair district. You can't get a swing site any closer than that, it's within your district. The other advantage, because it's in the district, presumably, when you redistrict, there's a large percentage of children that live around Northeast that are not going to go back to Blair. So, you're going to, you would minimize the number of moves and minimize the disruption to the kids. Riceville Beach, we've looked at several different options of where they would attend, it's roughly the same distance from College Park to Blair, and we, we really think that Sidbury Road gets too far away. It gets out of the distance and travel time parameters that Dr. Markley spoke of. So, in this scenario, Northeast would be built, Blair would go to Northeast for three years, the first two years would be the demolition, demolition and replacement of Blair. The first year that that school is open, Riceville Beach would actually go to that school for one year while we completed the additions and renovations at Riceville Beach. And while that's going on, we would, we need to make some improvements to Sidbury Road. The other advantage to this is we've looked at what improvements are needed, you know, the modular, modular units, getting those set up and in place, making some interior modifications so that the facility will function like a school. We're going to be considering that in the upcoming capital budget, but the, the other advantage to this, it allows us a two-year fiscal period to pay for that instead of a one-year fiscal period, which, so we, we, that, that limited capital budget can cover some other needs.
Because I would remind folks that we are, we're moving the Northeast bus lot from Laney Trask to Sidbury Road, and so there's some costs associated with that that we could spread out over that two-year period.
So, once the renovations are complete, College Park would go to Sidbury for two years instead of three years while the existing school was torn down and replaced, and they would move back as originally scheduled in 2019. Looking at the swing sites, again, Sidbury to College is seven point seven miles, estimated travel time is about fifteen minutes, and the Riceville Beach to Blair is six point one, and average time's thirteen minutes. So, you know, roughly, we're looking at the same, same distance and travel time for these two swing sites. The advantage is, again, it keeps the swing sites closest to their existing school, again, especially for, for Northeast, you know, having a swing site within your existing current, current district is, is very advantageous. It minimizes the possibility for, for multiple moves as a result, result of, of redistricting. You know, we've tried to use the swing sites that we think there's a, a chance that those students in redistricting would actually stay there and wouldn't be moving back. College Park is, is only at the swing site for, for two years instead of three years, which does address the concerns of the College, College Park. Some disadvantage, it does postpone the renovations at Riceville Beach for one year. We have spoken to some of the parents and the, and the staff and the faculty at Riceville Beach, they don't think that's an issue, they see the advantage, they actually see attending Blair Elementary School as an advantage, and so they're, they're in favor of this. And I wasn't quite sure whether to put this last one in the advantage category- And I wasn't quite sure whether to put this last one in the advantage category or the disadvantage category. It depends on how you look at it. But it would, it would postpone redistricting for one year.
Eddie, one question. The only reason you can't do the new school and Riceville Beach at the same time is because you'd have to use the Rock as the swing site for Riceville Beach, and that's outside of the parameters that we're looking at as far as distance and, and time. Is that right? Because I know originally, we were thinking about doing both at the same time.
Doing, um...
Riceville Beach.
And, and...
And the new Port of Mexico at the same time.
Well, one, once we got into, and that's why we, we, we got ahead on that one, looking at the conceptual plan, to see if what we wanted to do was feasible. And so, we, we hired a design firm to take a look at that, come up with the conceptual plans. And, and once we figured that out, it's feasible, but I, I wouldn't wanna do that with those kids on campus. And so, we do have to move them out for one year. And, and that's when the Riceville Beach parent or community...
Well, I'm not saying that they've remained there.
Okay.
What I was saying was, I thought originally, the Port of Mexico would be built, and at the same time, one of the options was, that could be built, and at the same time, we could do Riceville Beach and then move the Riceville Beach students over to the Rock.
Yeah, we, we went back and looked at the distance from Riceville Beach to the Rock, and that really felt, it puts it outside of that ten-mile...
That's what I said, the parameters that you set. But that's the, because otherwise, you could do both at the same time.
We, we could.
Didn't you?
We could.
Because then we're talking about, then you could do, uh...
I'm not sure we could get, there'd be, there's, there's less renovations, of course, that are needed for the Riceville Beach population than, than, than the College Park population just to, because of the number of kids. But I'm not sure that we could get those in, in time to move them the first year, but perhaps the second year of the program.
And there's some, when, when we do the Riceville Beach renovations, and we've told these folks from day one, the school is actually going to have less capacity than what it has now with all of the mobile units. And that's part of that redistricting process.
Right.
Uh, because the town's only giving us sort of a limited life with those mobile units, and we've, we're, by, we're, we're gonna, it was a two-year window, we're actually gonna end up...
We're gonna go back this year, and we're gonna be asking that they extend that. And, but the reason they set that is the, the town really wanted to see whether or not the bond passed. And I, and I think they're very pleased with the, with the bond passing and knowing that the renovations are included in the bond, and I, I don't think it would be...
Then they know there's a solution and...
Exactly. And that's what they were looking for. They just wanted to know that there was a solution and a plan. So, before we get to the action items, just lastly, the scope, schedule, and budget, the budget is a hundred and sixty million dollars. These are based on recent statewide school construction. But I will tell you that, you know, over, I, I believe that over the past five or six years, our construction costs have been artificially low, and we know costs are gonna increase, and we know, we just don't know when and how much. So, you know, we, we were very fortunate in the, in the past bond referendums to have a lot of savings on bid day, and we're gonna do everything we can to, to have that reoccur. But I think it's gonna be a little more challenging for us this time. Our project costs are turnkey. They do include all planning, design, construction, and all other soft costs. The new schools and replacement schools include furniture and instructional equipment. The program does include a four percent annual inflation through 2017, and we do have two percent for in-house program management and one percent as a program contingency. That is identical to what we had included in the, in the past bond referendums.
What's gonna happen to the furniture that is currently at College Park and Blair?
Uh, in the past, we've taken that furniture and made it available to other schools throughout the district, and, and then some of it is, is surplus. Also, I wanted to quickly give you an update, legislative update on a couple of items that do affect...
Eddie, let's hold there.
Okay.
Because this gets into the second action item.
Well, there's a, there's a, that's only one part of it.
Okay.
Um, there, there was, they added some, some methods for, for bidding construction, public construction projects, design-build, design-build bridging, and public-private partnerships. I don't anticipate that we will use any of those in this bond referendum. They established specific guidelines for pre-qualifying contractors on bids. We have pre-qualified contractors before, and, and we'll need to actually bring to the policy committee a policy that will allow us to do that on this bond referendum or on future projects. And there were also some new requirements for pre-qualification of architects, engineers, and surveyors for professional services, and that, that's what Wayne has on the agenda later on. We now have seven different delivery methods for bidding construction projects. In, in our school system, we've always used a traditional design-bid-build method. And in the, in the current bond referendum, I think we will continue to use a traditional design-bid-build method. However, there are certain projects, as Mr. Higgins pointed out, where I think that construction management at risk is beneficial, and I think we need to look at that a little closer. And those are the multi-year, multi-phase projects where you're implementing those projects, where you have construction going on on occupied school sites. Some of the benefits is you do go through a qualification-based selection for your construction manager. I think it's important that somebody has some experience in working on school sites if we're gonna be working with children on site. It's been shown over the, the past several years that it reduces change orders. It involves the contractor in constructability reviews. It also involves the contractor in getting some real-time cost estimating. So, we base our budgets on today's cost, but if we're doing design two years from now, having the contractor on board during the design phase, we get real-time cost estimates. And we also get some input and assistance in scheduling. We also get consistent site supervision. In multi-phase projects, a lot of times are multi, multiple bids, and we may end up with multiple contractors. And I think it's important, if we're gonna be working at a middle school for, for a couple of years, that we have the same project manager and the same superintendent. We've gotta have consistent supervision at that site throughout the project, not throughout individual phases. And just lastly, it does require pre-qualification of sub-trades and competitive bidding of all sub-trades. So, you are not eliminating the, the competitive bidding. So, these are just some of the benefits, and like I said, we'll, we'll be looking at this a little closer and making some recommendations for you later. On tonight's agenda, we have a couple of action items that'll help bring you into compliance with the updated legislation, and then I'll go over some things that we'll be bringing back to you. I think I've actually gone through the updates as part of the presentation. So, the action items for tonight, first, we're, we're asking that you approve the scope, schedule, and budget of the bond referendum. Specifically, we're, we're recommending the alternate schedule as presented. We're asking the, actually, the board already financed the, the bond projects as part of the previous finance option. There, and then later in the agenda, Mr. Bullard has a, an item for a resolution dealing with the professional services. And also tonight, we wanna get started in our selection process for the first round of projects. And, and per our policy, we have a board member that participates in that, and so we're asking for, for you to nominate or, or select a board num, a board member to participate in that process. And before you do, I'll let you know, we're gonna let you get through the holidays. I just wanna name, and then I'll contact you after January first. And, and that's really when we'll get into meetings and so forth with that process. But we would like you to go ahead and select someone. So, if you, if you could take action on, I guess, on item number one.
And we would request a motion that we approve the schedule for option two that we presented tonight.
That's part of number one, is that option two included? Was there a motion to?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, now, this is just number one. Comments, questions?
Option two is the one where College Park is only away for two years.
Two years.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the alternate schedule that we, that we presented tonight. That's what we're recommending.
And that's what they had requested.
Eddie, we appreciate the input from the College Park parents. They, we met with the gentleman who spoke tonight, and part of that comes from his suggestions, so we, like I said, we appreciate that community input.
Mm-hmm. And then, item number four, if, if you wanna talk about that, think about it, and get something back to Ms. Adams.
I believe that our work session is, the next, the next work session is committee assignments.
Well, I think that Ms. Eastep, didn't you ask for, didn't we receive an email?
Yeah.
I have no problems if you would like to do that, if there's any other...
I have no problem.
I think, over the years, I know I've served, I think various people have served. So, well, we'll get to that in a second.
Can we have two board members? Because I would recommend, as well as Lisa, Bruce, because he's got such background in finance and whatever.
You want one or two?
The more the merrier.
Mr. Shell, would you like to join Ms. Eastep on that?
If Ms. Eastep would like assistance.
All right, guys, I still need a second for the first motion.
Yeah, that's, that's, well, we had a second.
I, I have one question I would like to have clarified.
All right.
On the Blair project, when you showed it at the very beginning, it showed, I think, both an auditorium...
Yeah.
And a gymnasium. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is the gym gonna be accessible to commu, to the community without having to come into the school? I mean, without, I mean, without having to, you know, much like, like Snipes, gym is accessible to the community without having to pass through the, the primary school.
Exact, it, it is the same design as Snipes.
Okay, so, so the, it would become, it, it could become, in essence, a community center?
It, it could.
Okay.
They'll have the same access to the auditorium and the, and the gymnasium. It's, it's the same design, same layout as Snipes.
And doesn't Snipes also have access to the media center, or don't they?
Media center's at the end of the hallway.
Okay, all right. I was thinking, at one time, we talked about the ability to be able to use it.
The cafeteria, they, they have good access to...
Cafeteria has an outside door, the gym has an outside door.
Okay, all right.
I just wanna be certain of that.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved now. You have number two?
Well, that's our, number two's already been approved, number three is coming up, and if Mr. Shell and Ms. Eastep are...
So, you need down to number four? All right. Need a motion then to approve?
Can't you just, can't you just afford?
Yeah. Yeah.
You two have the duty.
Good.
Right, Mr. Hensh, we, we can associate with that.
I'll be in touch.
They've got the duty.
Thank you. And just to give you a heads up, as I mentioned, we will be bringing back a policy for pre-qualification of bidders. This is a new law, but, but there are actually several school systems throughout the state that have already adopted a policy, and, and we're getting copies of those, and no need in reinventing the wheel. If it's working well for them, we don't have a problem borrowing that. So, we, we are in the process of that. And as I mentioned, we will also be bringing back to you, as part of our upcoming capital budget process, scope, schedule, and budget for College Park, or the improvements needed at Sidbury to, to accommodate College Park, and also the scope, schedule, and budget for the Northern Transportation Division. Transportation is currently moving into the existing building, you know, that, that housed the Rock Church. But when College Park comes there and a middle school comes there, we, we have to move them, and, and we've identified a, a, a spot on that site. The site's large enough, and, but there's a, there's a scope and a, a budget associated with that. So, we'll be bringing that back to you as part of the capital project as well. And I'll ask you, are there any other questions?
As far as the, the pre-qualification of bidders and putting criteria together for that, is that something you do with the board? Is that something that you do as experts to bring back to the board for approval? How's that work here?
Well, the, the first thing I'll send you is a copy of the board policy and our procedures. But actually, in the pre-qualification legislation, they've actually listed the criteria for you. And it, it matches what we were using, so, fortunately. But, so now, they, they've told you what you're gonna use as, as your selection criteria. But I'll get you a copy of our current board policy and our current procedures for, and it'll, it'll list the, the criteria as well.
You know, so often, what we learn that helps us, protects us, is through scar tissue with bad experience. And I know there have been some occasions with some of the construction projects with the county government that the pre-qualification process has, has helped in keeping that from being a problem moving forward. So, I just wanna make sure that we include their concerns as we, we, because as you know, we're getting the money through...
Sure.
The county, supported by the taxpayers. I think that would help build solidarity with the county, so to...
Well, I think with the, the recent changes in legislation, that's really where you see bidding and construction going. I mean, you'll, you'll always have the traditional design-bid-build. But now, you're, you're allowed to pre-qualify contractors for those projects as well as some, some new delivery methods like CM at Risk, which really help on, on some of these complicated, complex projects. I think you're exactly right.
Obviously, I haven't seen it, but I guess for, maybe for Mr. Bullard, if the school board wanted to make it more stringent than state law, would we have that latitude?
I'd have to review the statute in detail to be able to answer that. I'm, I'm not sure at this point. But I'll be, I'll be glad to do that and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one, one of the criteria is, you know, it's, it's, I don't know how it's worded, but it's criteria that may be specific to your project. So, I think that gives you some latitude in, in really looking at, you know, what are the specific needs of this project? You know, if, if it's one of the middle school renovations versus a new school on a site that's undeveloped. Obviously, two totally different projects, and you probably want, you know, a contractor on each of those that has some specific experience.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Career Ridderness Academy at Mosley PLC at Pennsyl G dot Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This hopefully won't take very long, and it won't cost you very much money either. So, we're not talking about a whole lot of money. We are talking about a change in focus and in, in response to some of the needs of our system for our Mosley PLC. This has been the result of about a year's worth of work that we decided, as a school system and under Dr. Markley's leadership, that we looked at what we were currently doing at Mosley, and our enrollment was flattening out, or in fact, even decreasing some, and we were looking at why that was occurring. One of the things, as you recall, when we set up Mosley as a performance learning center, is that we were looking at a couple of things. Giving students some business experience through the model of the PLC, and also, students who had fallen behind in school, giving them an opportunity to graduate closer to on-time than they would have if they stayed at the traditional school, because it required twenty-eight credits to graduate at, at our traditional schools, and we were proposing that students graduate with the state statutory requirement, which we call the Reduced Elective Credit Diploma, at Mosley. And that was the only option for students to get the Reduced Elective Credit Diploma. Dr. Markley came, and we began to look at some things for our, improving our graduation rate and looking at what was being done around the state, and why we were falling behind a little bit is because we did not have that universal Reduced Elective Credit Diploma, which is essentially the state statutory requirement, because your requirements as a board are much greater than the state requirements. So, you allowed us, through board policy, to offer that Reduced Elective Credit at all, diploma at all of our high schools, which removed some of the student population, or some of the students who would want to go to Mosley, who didn't want that business experience or what have you to go there. And of course, that, that, that impacted their enrollment some. So, one of the things, one of the most active groups that we've had in our system, when Dr. Markley created the dropout focus group, is we began... is we began looking at lots of different things, and it's been a very successful group. And last year, our folk, one, one of our focuses was, let's see what we can do to, to repurpose Mosley to assist us in our dropout prevention efforts, and to add to some of the already ongoing efforts to improve our career education piece. So, we put a team together, and a part of this team was, of course, the current principal at Mosley, which is Mr. A.D. Pearson, which is here today. He's part of his team. And Ms. Lisa Morris, who is the director of Student Support Services, they headed this group up. Also, bringing into this team is our Director of Career and Technical Education, Ms. Laverne Pickett. So, this was a multi-divisional effort over the course of a year, and also brought in many staff members, and one of the key staff members is Ms. Jill Larson, who is the counselor at Mosley, serves several different purposes at Mosley, does a great job. And also our partners in the, in the Mosley PLC, which is, of course, Communities and Schools. And Mr. Mario Jeter has also been a part of that, and Mr. Jeter is here, has also been a, a part of Mosley almost since the very beginning. Now, he's got a larger role with communities and schools, but he still has a very distinct interest and helps us a great deal, and has been a great partner for us. So, this has been a long process, and we wanted to present it to you tonight. It's not going to create a major shift or a major issue, but it's going to give Mosley a little bit more bite, and it's going to give us something that we have at our other specialty high schools. When you graduate from Wilmington Early College or from Isaac Bear Early College, the student not only has a high school diploma, but they have something beyond that to take with them into the post-secondary world. At Wilmington Early College, many of our students have an associate's degree and graduate at the same time with an associate's degree as they graduate, when they graduate with a high school diploma. In fact, technically, because Cape Fear Community College's graduation is before our high school graduation, many of our students actually have their associate's degree before they have their high school diploma, which is really cool, because these kids come to the high school graduation dressed in their, in their Cape Fear Community College cap and gowns. And that's really cool to see that. So, they have that. Whereas at Isaac Bear, our students have up to two years of university credit portable that they can take anywhere in the state system. And many of our kids, we kind of keep up with, because I know a lot of these kids, because I've been kind of involved in the early colleges since the very beginning. And a lot of these kids go off to NC State, Carolina, East Carolina, of course, and several of our other schools, and, and, and get there two years ahead. And, and I keep up with some of these kids, and they're, and they're graduating. Some of them, who, who finished two years ago, are going to be graduating this December from universities in North Carolina, which is really cool. But at Mosley, which is also one of our specialty high schools, they graduate with just a high school diploma. What we're proposing is that they graduate not only with a diploma, but with an industry certification, which is one of those things that we've been talking about in our vocational education program. You've been talking about creating a vocational high school. That'd be cool in the future, but right now we'll be able to do this, and it not cost the kids any money. So, I'll just shut up and go through the presentation, because I'm about to blow the whole thing. Because the, the team worked on the presentation, and I want you to see the presentation and the hard work that they've done. We're, we're asking you tonight, two things. To allow us to change, actually, allow us to change the focus, and essentially, the board to change the name of Mosley Performance Learning Center to the Career Readiness Academy at the Mosley Performance Learning Center. So, we're adding that to change our focus. And of course, this is the, this is the, the vision of the Career Readiness Academy. And of course, we're looking at giving the students, again, some business-oriented experiences, but instead of just giving them the credentials, we want them to, I mean, it's good, just giving them the experience, we want to give them the credential too. So, when they graduate, they not only have some experience, they have a credential. Well, how is it different? Everything that they're going to do over there throughout the entire core of the curriculum is going to infuse CTE. So, even though they're going to be getting North Carolina Standard Course of Study, they're going to be getting CTE infused in that, which they already set up to do with the way the classrooms are set up over there. So, they're already set up to do this. And then give them some, some actual hands-on experiences in the fields that they want to go into. Job shadowing, internships, which is essentially working for free. Y'all know what internship's all. And of course, our rationale for this is, of course, our major focus in our school districts, since Dr. Markley's been here, is improving our graduation rate, because that's what we're supposed to be doing. Graduating our kids with the ability to do things when they graduate. So, these are the things, and also, it will plug us into the local business community that we really want to be involved in, and they want us to be involved, so we will not only develop some superficial partnerships, but some actual real partnerships with our local business community. One of the really cool things about this is that, if you're looking at the national data, students that pursue career and technical education graduate at a much higher percentage than just general education students. So, when we saw that, we went, wow, we really need to be plugging into this. Again, I've kind of already gone over this with you, but we want our kids at all of our specialty high schools to graduate with something other than a high school diploma. This gives us that opportunity. They'll have at least one portable, nationally-recognized industry credential, plus they'll be exposed to real work. Here's our timeline. This year, we're going to, we're working with the staff, the team is working with the staff, to improve the instructional design at the current school, and then we're going to plan for the implementation process for the credentialing, and we're doing that with Laverne's department right now. And then next year, we sustain what we're doing instructionally, but we implement the CTE credentialing process. So, next year, actually, kids who, who are, who are at Mosley will have the opportunity next year to begin getting that industry credential. Of course, we want to continue to serve kids who are currently at Mosley. We think they're a good, a good base population, but we want to begin this year recruiting students, working with the high school principals. We've already talked to our high school principal like this, because they're part of our dropout team. Well, go ahead and plug those in, so that we can begin getting our students this year who want that for next year. That basically will allow every kid who goes there, except for our current 12th grade students, who will be graduating. But they'll, they'll, they'll benefit from our change in focus, even, even this year as we go. This is what we're looking at starting with. Now, we can expand the credentialing opportunities, but here are the credentialing opportunities, and most of you know, these are in very much demand, and kids can actually take that, that credential and go right into the field and begin work right after high school. And here's what it costs in order for them to get that, but this, because our CTE program would pay for it, it wouldn't cost the kids or the families anything, and we already have the money available to be able to do that.
Dr. Holliday, I'm sorry, could you tell me, what is a work readiness certificate?
Ms. Pickett, work readiness.
That's A.C.T., no, I'm sorry.
Ms. Pickett, could you identify yourself for our new board member, so he knows your role?
I'm, good evening. I'm Laverne Pickett, and I am the supervisor of Career and Technical Programs for new Hannover County schools. The work readiness certificate is the credential that students earn through A.C.T. work keys. We administer that to every senior that's in high school. But at our new focus for Mosley, we're planning to offer that option to more than just our, our seniors. But that's A.C.T. credential.
Thank you.
And they have to take that exam?
Yes, that's required for all graduating seniors.
Right, and it won't cost you anything.
That are, the, it's required for all graduating seniors that have a C.T., a, a career technical education concentration in, in the state.
Thank you.
The benefits, we, we pretty much talked to you about that. It's still going to be a small program, and we believe that, that will, that will be the key, and plugging into our community for support in the areas that, that, that the credentials, the folks have, have expertise in. We hope that we will be, that, that Mosley will begin to become, again, a critical piece in our puzzle in our improving our graduation rate. And of course, we want to improve our student achievement, and also the perception of Mosley as well, which is also, every time we change the focus, we, we look at that as well. And we've pretty much hammered this with you.
Two things. One is, just to add to that, is part of that process last year involved students. I sat in on one of the meetings where they held, and they talked to students about where they thought the schools should go. And it also fits still in with that communities and school partnership. So, it's not something that would, would take that partnership and, and not allow us to continue, because they've been a great partner at Mosley for the last several years, so they'll still be a partner in this, in this redesign.
Right. We are excited about this, and like I said, this is something that we've spent right now over a year. We started last fall working on this, because we knew we needed to create some different options for, for Mosley and make it more viable. Mr. Pearson and his staff jumped right in. Ms. Morris seized the bull by the horns, and it would just aggravate the heck out of me coming up in my office going, what are we doing about this? Were you moving on this? Have you talked to the board about this yet? It's worrying the heck out of me, so that's why I'm here tonight to talk to y'all. She's been, she's, she's, she's been the champion, and, and has worked really hard at this. But this is one of the things that we really feel like we need to do, and it's not going to cost us a lot of money, and it's actually going to benefit the children. Yes, sir, Mr. Shell?
You, you, I, it sounds exciting to me. I guess my question, have you matched, I know when you, you list the benefits to the student of the things in their toolbox, I guess, that they take with them. Have you matched that to possible jobs that the student could envision? And maybe in addition to that, the possible intern programs, so that you build the excitement early?
Yes, we have. We've worked, that, that team, and in fact, Laverne has been, has been the champion on that. She's got the plugins in the community, which is why we're starting with these, with these industry credentials, because this is where the kids, we know, can go and get jobs right now. Kids can go get jobs, if they're Microsoft certified, they can go get jobs right now without going to college, and make more money sometimes than, than, you know, I got a college graduate in my home that I'm trying to figure out.
But now, aren't internships part of this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
But they'll be doing that during their high school time.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
These, these, these classes exist in the other high schools. What are the, have, have the other facilitators been contacted in the other high schools to find out how those internships are working?
Well, they're not, they don't get the industry credential in, in the high school. They don't get that industry credential, and it's not paid for. So, that's what we're trying to do here at Mosley. We offer different classes at the high schools, but what we're trying to do here is that industry credential. That's not available at the other high school.
So, they don't get the certificate in the other high schools?
Yes. They do. Yes, that, they do get the, they are able to earn the credentials at the other high schools. And what we're doing, this is the, the effort that we're doing at Mosley, and, and you asked the question, are the other facilitators aware? Yes, they are aware. And yes, they can help the students with the internship placements. What we're doing is a school-wide effort at, at what we're planning and proposing at Mosley with the career focus for the entire school, is what we're going to say to the parents and the recruitment tool and the hook to get students interested in Mosley, is we're saying that if they are signing to come to Mosley, we're going to guarantee high school diploma along with whichever credential, or as many credentials as they choose to want to earn.
This doesn't eliminate the reduced credit diploma that was already at Mosley. So, you, so you, you'll, you'll have the state minimum requirements, plus an industry credential.
Now, now.
What's the state minimum requirement?
But the difference is, at, at, at Mosley, everything we do at Mosley is going to be geared towards career and technical education, as, as opposed to where a kid leaves his career and technical education program at his high school, and goes to his math class or his English class, or what have you, it's math, English, what have you. What we're trying to do here is infuse everything through career and technical education.
So, they have to take these classes if they're at Mosley?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the focus.
So, what is, what is the extra that's going to be added to Mosley? What extra staffing is going to be added to Mosley to do this?
Yeah, there's only one position that they don't have right now, and that's that career tech facilitator position. And we've already done that, because we had the money to do that.
Yes.
So, that's, that's, and, and that's there now.
And that's funded through?
State CTE money.
And then the, the certificate funding is going to be through?
State CTE.
CTE. So, all that money we have available right now.
Okay.
Who supervises the internships and, I mean, is there an intern supervisor?
It will be the career development facilitator that, that will be at the school, that will coordinate those community connections, and also the opportunities for the students.
Right.
And in order to, I mean, I, I saw the list of Microsoft programs that you were talking about.
That's really just the beginning. We're, we're hoping.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask about, because.
We're hoping that we can, we can expand as we go. This is what we're going to start with.
You know, I mean.
And the reason we started there was because Mosley already had a business teacher there. And to start with the business program that they had there, and to expand it, to offer the, the credentialing option was not there for Mosley. So, we've already put into place, so that they are a, a testing site. The teacher is, is being certified already. We're planning to expand that certification to the entire staff at Mosley, so the integration of, those, those skills are embedded into the math, the English, all of their, their core areas as well.
Okay.
What kind of, what kind of help is given, or what kind of, I guess, training is given to the facilitator to enable, or not even training, to help open up the doors for the internships? What are you looking for in a facilitator in order to, to help that happen?
In order, well, all facilitators, when they become career development facilitators, in order to get the certification, they are required to go through a career development facilitator's training program that's, that certifies them. They get, it's the number of hours that they have to put in, and projects that are done, and then they can add that certification to their, their license. That's what all, in order to be in the position, they have to be licensed in that, in the area. So, that, that's the only way we can hire them.
Okay.
And if they don't already have it, we make sure that they are in, they get the training that they need to get that certification added.
And what's the goal number of students that y'all are shooting for at Mosley?
We want more than 100. I mean, right now, we're, we're below 100, and we really, in order to make a viable school, we really want more than 100 kids.
This doesn't impact the pathway side of the house. That's still a separate program.
Right. That, Dr. Markley makes a very good point. We still have, Mr. Pearson is still going to be responsible for the other side of the house, which is the middle school long-term suspension program, which is called Middle School Pathways, and the high school long-term suspension program, which is, of course, High School Pathways. So, when y'all are sitting in disciplinary hearings, those programs still exist. They won't change. This is just the Mosley side of the house. If you've been into Mosley, you see that they have essentially got two hallways. One is pathways, and the other one down the way away from it is Mosley. So, those two programs are very separate.
And so, you said that the recruitment of students, you were going to work with the existing high schools, the traditional high schools, to identify students at risk of, of dropping out? Is that, is, is that your target audience, or are you just looking?
Part of that, but it's also, yes, it's a good point. Part of that, but it's also students who may have that interest in being in that small environment and getting that credential at that, in the areas that are offered here, which is essentially some of, some of the things that, that Mosley does. But the initial hit, hook for Mosley was the Reduced Elective Credit Diploma. And if you want a small school, you can go to Mosley, but now, we, we want to put a little more teeth into Mosley.
Okay.
Any other questions? So, we need a motion then to approve this, that will change the name?
Yes, sir. You're approving the change in name, which would be the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley PLC, because we're still working with our, our partners. And we're asking for a change in focus, so those two things, allowing us to change that focus.
Motion to approve?
Still move.
Is there a second? Second? Thank you. Any other questions? All those who favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's approved. Thank you very much. Thank y'all for being here. Item C, Resolution Professional Design Services, appendix H. Mr. Bullard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And one of the things Mr. Anderson mentioned in his presentation was some recent, was a recent change in the statutes regarding And one of the things Mr. Anderson mentioned in his presentation was some recent was a recent change in the statute regarding what's commonly called as qualification-based selection of design professionals in the construction and and maintenance project areas such as surveyors, engineers, and architects. And a recent change in the law was that the board has to go through a formal qualification-based selection process unless it decides to exempt itself for smaller fees of under fifty thousand dollars. For instance, a one thousand dollar surveying fee. If you if the board doesn't exempt itself then from that, then it would have to send out a request for qualifications, convene a committee to review those qualifications and determine which surveyor is the most qualified and then attempt to negotiate a fee with that contractor, that surveyor. That process is cumbersome, it takes a long time and the recommendation is that the board exempt itself in situations where the statute allows it to, which is where the the professional fee is less than fifty thousand dollars. The existing board policies already require the superintendent and his staff to seek the best value for the school board, which typically is going to be the lowest cost, but not always based on the the experience and criteria required of the service provider. So the resolution before you is would would is allowing you to delegate to the superintendent or his designee the authority to make these exemptions on a case-by-case basis for the smaller projects. I believe it would save time. I believe it would also probably save you money because it would actually allow you to negotiate fees on the front end with service providers, whereas the statute requires a more formal process where you select them based on qualifications and then try to negotiate a fee with them.
Well, I'll move for approval, but only for the purpose of discussion.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I have a que I have a question. What happens if instead of fifty thousand, the number is you put ten thousand in there? I mean, does that? Does the statute say it has to be fifty thousand?
No, the statute allows the board to exempt itself or or allows the board to delegate that power to the superintendent on any for any professional fee less than fifty thousand.
Well, my my problem is this, I I guess twofold. Number one, as a member of the Board of Education, one of the charges to us is to supervise the spending of money for the system. And part of that, I think, is, you know, what we do here tonight. I mean, it's on television, people can see it, they know where we're spending the money. I understand the rationale and logic of saying some of these small jobs, maybe we don't need to know every little job with that is being done like was suggested, a thousand dollar surveyor or, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars for this, that, or the other of a professional nature. But when you start talking about fifty thousand dollars, you're talking, in my mind, you're talking about some real money. And so I would have a problem with this fifty thousand dollar number. Now, if it were to be cut back to, say, five or ten thousand, which ought to cover a lot of small jobs, you know, I don't have, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I I got to say upfront, I mean, I I moved that we do this for the purpose of discussion, but I can, I will tell you right now that at fifty thousand, I will vote no on this.
If I may just provide one additional detail, Mr. Higgins, your board policy already allows the superintendent to sign contracts with service providers up to fifty thousand dollars without board approval. This isn't changing that. The only thing this would be doing is allowing the superintendent to exempt the the board from having to go through this formalized qualification-based selection process for those types of professional services. Your 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 stat your limit, your threshold for board approval is already fifty thousand dollars by existing board policy.
Well, I was on, I mean, I I that must have been passed several years ago because I had forgotten that they had done it because I have always opposed the raising the limit and I was not aware that we had previously passed such a number.
And we had a very long discussion on it.
Well, I must have voted no at that time, too.
Probably.
Okay, well, I mean, if.
We can check the minutes.
Your motion is second. Any other questions?
I guess I'm trying to make sure I understand what you just said. Right now, superintendent has the ability to enter into contracts up to fifty thousand for services, right?
Correct.
And the lot did you did you just say that the law is about to change? And you kept, but you do have the ability to he can exempt the board from having to go through that with the new law, is that what you said?
Well, there there are two different things. One is the threshold, the dollar threshold that the superintendent has for entering into service contracts. The board has set that at fifty thousand dollars. There is no statute saying what that threshold should be. That's staying the same. This resolution deals with whether or not the board should exempt itself from the qualification qualification-based selection process for engineers and architects on projects. And and what that is, is the statute says that unless the board exempts itself, then the board has to hire engineers and surveyors and architects based on this qualification-based process, which is an odd process that does not allow the board to get price quotes from those professionals. The board has to get proposals based on their qualifications. And then without knowing what their fees or costs would be, the board is would then be required to select the one most qualified and then without having anything to compare their their prices to, try to negotiate a price sort of in a vacuum or based on prior experience on other projects, what a what a fair fee would be. If the board exempts itself from that process, then the superintendent's office can seek bids from surveyors and engineers and architects based on their fees. And then obviously would select one that's qualified, but would have a range of fees to compare in order to get the best value for the school board. The the board could do that on a case-by-case basis. We could bring each proposal to the board for the board to vote on whether to exempt itself from that process. But because of the timing involved in getting that on the board's monthly agendas, the feeling is that that would delay smaller projects unnecessarily.
Thank you.
And so impact a lot of the middle school renovations because there's going to be multi-phase projects with potentially different vendors handling different or different contractors handling different aspects of those? Mr. Hanson, anything you want to add to that from operations side?
It it also would affect it also will affect multiple small maintenance projects that go on on a regular basis. This will change nothing that that the board has seen in the past. Everything that the board expects to come to it will still come to it. This will, if we don't exempt ourselves, this will really hamstring our ability to operate and you will be seeing many more smaller projects and it will actually cost the vendors and the service providers more money in order to provide us with qualification-based selection.
I don't have any pro I don't have, I have no problem with doing this. I just want to make sure that the board and the public are told about these these projects and that it's not done, I don't want to say in secret, but I mean, it it's not done without public knowledge of how we are spending their money. And so I would, you know, I will, then I will vote for it based on the fact of cutting down the the timeframe and and all. But I I still am a big proponent of transparency. And I know that's a word that gets overused, but, you know, to me, a fifty thousand dollar project, especially if it's something like a design work, is actually design work on a four, five hundred thousand dollar project. And I realize that comes to us, but I'd like to, I I want to make sure that we and the public are informed about who we're using and how much it's costing us.
Well, that would mean the same one. If I may, if I may, Mr. Hayes, just respond to that. Whoever's operating, could they, if you could scroll up to the bottom of the page, you'll see that there is a provision at the end that says that the superintendent must report any of those exemptions to the board in an open meeting at a later time.
Okay.
And that was put in there because of your very concern.
Okay.
We we did want there to be transparency and that way it will be reported in an open meeting and as an information item and will be in the board's open meeting minutes.
Okay. Well, I look forward to that because I don't know that we have had that very often. And, you know, if we if if the superintendent's or his designees had this fifty thousand dollar authority, apparently we hadn't had much going on. So.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion? Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item D, two thousand fifteen sixteen school calendars, Dr. Smith.
Yes, before you, you have the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school calendars. We have six calendars for all of our schools, traditional year-round, pre-K, Lake Forest Academy, Wilmington Early College, and Isaac Bear Early College, and we ask for your approval of these calendars.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
It's probably one y'all all know, but some time ago, I guess, six, maybe two months ago, the Board of Elections came and met with the school board.
I was going to say.
And I didn't go through the calendars.
I think Mr. Higgins is getting.
I chair I chair I chaired the calendar committee.
Yeah, he was going to address that.
That is, that is handled in the, let me make sure I got my right. This is fourteen. In the even number of years, the November election day will be a teacher work day. In the odd number of years, the May primary will be a teacher work day.
Why did you not consider the the primary and the May and November, I guess?
As a what?
Why did you not consider work days for May and November? Was it just too cumbersome?
Well, the the reason was, you don't have, you have a general election in the even number of years and you have a primary in the odd number of years and two things. Number one, the state legislature has put such bookends. You can't start school before approximately August twenty-fifth. You have to be done by June tenth. If we start putting any taking any more days out, we're going to be cutting into the Christmas vacation and I don't want to have to deal with parents if I start cutting the Christmas vacation down to two days before Christmas, come back for a couple of days, maybe get New Year's off, you know, like employers do. But there was just no reason to take May in the even numbered years.
I'm I'm not challenging you, I'm just asking the question.
Well, okay, that that's that's the reason.
Well, I mean, there's no primary, right?
When there's no, yeah, there's no primary in the even numbered years.
In those years. So that's why it's not in.
Okay, I'm sorry. I I that that's it.
And I thought that's what you were asking, to make sure those are covered.
Yeah, yeah. It's November in the even numbered years, May in the odd numbered years. So.
And then that would cover what the what the Board of Elections was asking us to do.
That that's my question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
But I will say, we were, or the committee and the system, we were praised by one of the local networks for asking for input from the community and from the parents. So that's a nice.
And let me let me be clear too. It's the odd numbered school years. I just sitting here thinking, like, there's no primary next May, but there is a primary the following May, which is the fifteen sixteen school year and then the general election in the sixteen seventeen school year. So when I said odd numbered, it's it's the beginning of the school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item E, Cooperative Innovation High School Program in New York for Wilmington Early College High School, Appendix J, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, we ask that you approve this. This is a routine approval, no changes, but it occasionally will get it from the New Schools Project that they want us to continue to say we're doing what we're doing at the early colleges. And I know the date says it has to be done by December one, but they just got it to us last week, right, Ms. Morris? I mean, so it was, it's not something that we understand why they put the date December one. We haven't been dragging our feet trying to get it to you. They just got it to us. Ms. Morris called the folks in Raleigh and they said it was no problem, we just needed to get it done. So we're getting it done now.
Move move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Well, next item on the agenda is our call to the audience for our non-agenda items. We certainly appreciate gentlemen's patience and and I'm sure it's been very educational to to witness all of this, but our, we have one speaker for our call to the audience on non-agenda items, Mr. David Elrod.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm here.
Yeah, pull that mic up a little bit, make sure, okay?
I'm here for my senior project presentation on, and my senior project was on why there should be reading specialists in high schools. The definition of literacy has a lot to do with my project and it is understanding, evaluating, using, and engaging within written text in this society. And this is important because it clarifies that literacy is not just being able to read, but being able to understand what's written down. Reading specialists should be integrated into high school because it would allow more students to pass high school due to understanding how to read. And three point five percent of all American high school students drop out. In jails, there would be a lot less people if more people were literate due to reading specialists in high schools. And this is because seventy percent of all people in jails in the U.S. have a below proficient reading level. So. In adulthood, fourteen percent of all adults cannot read. And thirty-two million adults in the U.S. are illiterate. And once again, if there are reading specialists in high schools, these numbers would be lower. And a reading specialist, I'm sure you all know what it is, but it's just somebody, for those who don't know, it's just somebody that helps others read and become literate. And one quote that I quite like from Kofi Anon, a Nobel Peace Prize winner, is literacy is a bridge from misery to hope, which showed, which is saying that literacy is the base basis of everyday life and everyone needs it. So my conclusion for why reading specialists should be in high schools is because there are thirty-two million adults that are illiterate today and that number should go down if reading specialists were implemented into high school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What high school are you from?
Ashley.
Ashley. Thank you very much. You did a good job. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, item seventeen, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight, one, and three.
Move going, move to go in closed session.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are in closed session and we'll go to the the big room, not the gi dump, but the big room.